I'd like to call the May 5, 2014 meeting of City Council to order. Ms. Walton, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Newton.
Here.
Mr. Pons.
Here.
Mayor Holman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Firelin.
Here.
Our first item of business today are items for City Council meeting and also a public comment period. Jack, is there anything in particular?
No, sir.
Okay. This is a time when anyone who wishes to address council on any issue may do so. If you do, please come forward, state your name and address, and we're here to listen.
I come sideways. I called there this morning and told him I noticed that you were meeting this afternoon because as a longtime school watcher, education advocate, I have been going through my -- I've been a clipper, and I have lots of clippings that SWAM Library wants to have to put for people who are studying schools. And there's so much that schools embrace that I'm getting ready to talk to Will Malno, and a lot of them, he wrote in the 50s and 60s when the county was talking about wanting better schools for its children, and so they need to merge. We went through all of that, and it's been just amazing to see how what goes around comes around, and so I see you're discussing that again. I've been really appreciating the public comments in the Gazette about common sense because I think that that -- I've always been sad that we lost James Blair as a community building, and it's gone closed on sort of offices now, not using well the auditorium and the library and the cafeteria. So I just think that should be reused in a better way, and realizing we have a lot of empty spaces in the area that could probably serve really well. And I just, I guess I'm here to ask for common sense. Thank you.
Lois, thank you very much, and I think all of us will agree with your comments. Anyone else wish to address council? If not, our next agenda item or background presentations, discussions. The first is the fiscal year 2015 budget adoption.
Mr. Sarah will give this update.
Good afternoon, Mayor Holman and members of the council. We're at a point where we're about to give you -- go for budget approval on Thursday with the budget resolution. This is a schedule that's part of that budget resolution. These are the changes to two funds. We changed the general fund and the sales tax fund since the budget was introduced about five weeks ago. In the general fund, we started the year about a $230,000 reserve brought forward. We were able to get some savings on the regional library here due to some changes they've done with staffing for next year, so there were some savings, and that keeps us in sync with the joint contract with James City County. So we're getting about $5,300 there. And then also, there was a slight change in the funding formula for the Virginia Peninsula Regional Jail, have a savings of about $14,450. So that brings us down with reserves brought forward, about $210,000 at this point. So that is the operating fund. The other fund is the sales tax fund, which is the capital improvement program. We're going to be adjusting that up $50,000 next year, and this is what we talked about with the pushing up the design work for the underground wiring on Second Street, about $50,000, and then a decrease in school capital projects of almost $700,000. That will keep us in sync with James City County's proposed budget. Of course, we all know there's a lot of decisions yet to be made with the school, not only James Blair, school operations, but the middle school also. But that puts us down to a level in sync with the county where we're at now, and it gives us a basis as a starting point for next year. The other three funds, no changes at all in the utility fund, public assistance fund, or the quarter path CBA fund at this point.
Terrific, Phil. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Phil on any of these changes?
I have one question. Mr. Sarah, on the change there on the Second Street underground wiring design and then the school capital projects, those changes are specifically for next fiscal year?
Yes, the changes, we had -- there's a five-year plan, and the first year is what's actually appropriated.
Do these changes at all impact the overall five-year plan?
Yes, especially the schools, because the whole five-year plan changed every year of those five years to be in sync with the county's proposed budget. Like I said, that is a placeholder for the schools. There's so much yet to be decided with the two big projects.
Then the revised CIP, then, is that available online? So if anyone wanted to look not just at next fiscal year, but also the five years out, are all those changes incorporated and available online?
It's not online today. It will be if the budget is approved Thursday.
Okay, so Thursday.
Yes, yes.
Okay, good, okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, Phil. The next under budget option is outside agency post audit. Jack?
Yes, sir. Our last meeting, the question was raised by Councilman Pons concerning the city's practice with regard to evaluating how agencies, outside agencies, actually spend funds that are allocated to then by the city. And in order to address that question and then zero in in the particular areas where the greatest interest may lie, Phil, Sarah, and I put together a spreadsheet which shows all the major agencies that the city funds, both human services, cultural agencies, community economic development, transportation, and others, including the schools themselves, and indicated on there some notes with regard to how we interact with those agencies to monitor their spending. And also, in many cases, we have members serving on their board of directors or like city representation. So this chart simply summarizes those basics as, again, help to be an overview to the overall issue. But we thought with that as background, perhaps you all might wish to have a further discussion on the particular agencies that you would like the city staff to work with to develop more information on not just their plans for the future, but how they've actually spent money on the post audit look. So we'd like to turn it back to you for some discussion, and then we can get involved in that as well.
Terrific. Thanks for putting this together. I think this is really useful to have sort of this broken down and sort of the type of funding that goes, whether it's discretionary or essentially mandated by formula or what have you, is really helpful. And then the representations, I think this is useful for everyone on council. Doug, you started this discussion, so why don't I toss it to you and let you pick up, and then we can go from there.
Thank you, yeah. And Jack and Phil, I appreciate you assembling this information in this format. It is helpful. And so going back to that discussion that we had last month, I think for me, the agencies or the funding that really comes to question is the money that we allocate really for an economic development type activity, WADMAC, Colonial Williamsburg Marketing Funds and Alliance Marketing Funds. And I think those three specifically, they're rather significant, both in the amount that we give and then also in what it is that we hope that they achieve. And so, you know, what I had proposed last month was some sort of memorandum of understanding or letter of intent to kind of describe what it is that we hope to accomplish with these funding dollars. So I think there seems to be a lot of discussion going on, you know, in the community about measurables, accountability. And so my take on particularly what I see at the Alliance is we're heading in the right direction with new leadership there. And so I did have a conversation with the new CEO at the Alliance about this topic, and we had, you know, a very good candid conversation. And I think that organization particularly wants to do better at what it is that they're doing. And I know Councilman Foster has been, he and I have had lots of conversations on this issue, and he's the chamber rep, and he too has had some conversations with Ms. Riordan. So I don't know, Scott, do you have any?
Yeah. What we've been presented today, I think, is the most basic first step, just accounting for where the money goes. From here, I would really like to see conversation between staff and those agencies we fund to see what we can come up with on a level above a basic accounting of, you know, where do we, you know, yes, we give you this money, we'd like to know where it goes, but what is it doing? And especially with the Alliance, I think there's some, a good conversation to be had there, so.
And I think you're on the right track there. And, you know, what I might suggest is that we already have a sort of framework that maybe we can exploit here in that, you know, annually, at least with the Chamber and Colonial Williamsburg, we send them a letter requesting their request for funding. And I'm wondering if that might be the framework within which we then sort of be more specific about sort of what, you know, sort of what we expect from them in terms of that. And I might suggest that the way to start might be to have city staff and the staff of those organizations, and I would include WADMAC in that. I represent the city on WADMAC, and I don't think I've ever made sort of a formal presentation to council about, here's what's WADMAC's done. But I think that could be part of this as well, maybe at the same time that we get funding requests from the Chamber and from Colonial Williamsburg. So what I might suggest is that we ask city staff to engage staff from those organizations and figure out sort of what, you know, what kind of information would be most useful, what kind of requests we should make, and see if we can't find some way of incorporating that in the request letter. Does that make sense?
Well, it does, and I think, you know, again, we're heading in the right direction. As you do serve on WADMAC and Scott is on the Chamber, I think he would be a good person to sit in that. I certainly brought the issue up and have been engaged in this conversation for a long time, and, you know, I don't know that I'd want to go to another meeting, but I'd like to be able to participate in these discussions, both from an industry, the hotel industry, lodging tourism industry's perspective, to be able to have that conversation with these outside agencies. From my perspective as a councilperson and also as a tourism professional, I think, you know, there's a benefit to be had from that. Now, I'm not the smartest guy in the room by any means, but I'm here. So I'd like to be able to sit in those conversations and taking nothing away from city staff and line staff having those meetings, I think, you know, given where we've been, the lack of results, since some, but the lack of results in the condition of our local environment in terms of tourism, you know, we've got to get this thing moving quickly, and there's a high degree of importance on this issue for me.
Yeah, I appreciate that and understand that. I'm wondering if the best way wouldn't be for the initial contacts between staff to take place, then bring something to us to have a discussion among council and give them further advice to, and iterate that way rather than inserting council in the initial stage of the process.
Well, I don't know what we would say by doing that.
I think it changes the conversation.
It should be changed, and that's part of, that's my point. You know, I think we've been at this for so many years, doing the same thing essentially. It's time to change the narrative. And I think this, what I'm hearing from the Alliance and Scott's advices to me is that there's a willingness to listen, a willingness to work with, and a willingness to change that narrative. And so let's get it right as soon as possible.
To a degree. I'm already interjected in the dialogue on this because of the conversations that have gone on for the last six months. So really, to an extent, council's already there. As far as the details go, I think I could contribute to that discussion. Do I necessarily have to be there for it to work? No, but, you know, you're kind of invested, so.
I was just going to say that this came up at our prior meeting with the intent or the expressed interest in creating a memorandum of agreement or memorandum of understanding with the Alliance. What I requested at that meeting was for information on how we account for council allocations to other outside agencies. What we have here is a list of the agencies we give the money to. We know whether it's discretionary or state mandated or partnership requirements, contract driven, in the second category. The third category has the staff or councilperson involved in that relationship. But it doesn't explicitly say then, for example, if we look under Arts Commission, we know how the Arts Commission handles the allocation of those funds to the variety of agencies. They have formula that they go through and the way they evaluate the applications, they attend the performances, they see the end result. Then they can make an informed decision the next year. What I don't see here really is, and maybe there is no one way to do it, and it has to be different for each organization or each category of organizations, depending upon the complexity of the relationship. And honestly, to some degree, the amount of money that's being invested, because you can't devote the same attention to a $1,000 grant in every detail that you can to a $600,000 grant. Not that they're not both important, it's just that after a point, you begin to spend more money than you're possibly saving by the attention to it. The concern I would have about having too much council involvement on the front side of the conversation is then, what is the point of bringing it back to council for our discussion and our deliberation if there's already a perception that council's involved in the creation of the document? And if that's the case, then does that limit the public access to the conversation? Whereas if it's done by staff of both organizations, then brought to a public meeting of council where we have to openly discuss with each other the merits of it, and I firmly believe it has to be done in consultation with each of the funding agencies because we have to, or recipient agencies, because we have to know what's reasonable for them to provide. They have to understand what our expectations are, and we have to then find a way that's meaningful for both sides, for the measurement and then the accountability side of it. Because we don't want a grant recipient measuring something that's not important to council, and we don't want at the last minute for council to have to say to the recipient, oh, we're glad you measured this over the past year, but that's not what we're looking for. And I can appreciate the desire to get involved, and I understand, Mr. Pons, about, you know, we need to change. I wouldn't say it's changing the narrative as much as we all desire much stronger tourism results from the investments that we're providing. Some of it might be the narrative, but I think it's more the end result that we're talking about. So how do we measure not just the end results, because we know what they are, how do we measure the effectiveness of the effort that's put forth based upon the investment we make that gets us whatever result we get? The problem is we can't always know if what we're, the effort that we're getting is the right effort or not. All we know is what the end result is. So we have to be upfront in what are those measurement categories that we want measured? And I think council could have a discussion about that to advise staff, and staff could have the conversation with the various agencies, whichever they are, whether it's any of the three, and then have that conversation and come back with something for us to talk about again. And that way, at least, we're involved on the front side and we're involved on the backside. But that's just my opinion.
It seems to me you put your finger on one thing, is that each situation is different. So we really have to, and I think it would be useful for staff to take those situations where, say, outside of the Arts Commission, where the mechanism exists, or outside of those situations where it's mandated by formula and what have you, and really take a look at each one of those and say, you know, what is there, you know, what kind of reporting back would really be useful to the city? And then try to create some type of, you know, paragraph or group of sentences that essentially says to these agencies, here's what we're interested in, here's the type of information we want back. Seems to me if staff has that kind of discussion with a variety of agencies involved, then they can come back to us and say, here's what we've done, here are, each one of these situations is different, and here's what we're doing in each of these situations. Does that work for you as council in terms of the type of information you're looking for?
Well, I think I understand kind of a consensus here. The conversations will continue, and I'll be involved in conversations, you know, one way or another. I think, you know, we, as a body, have had these conversations from the first day I've been on the council about how to measure tourism results, and maybe we kicked the can down the road and we haven't gotten to that point because we haven't made that decision yet. We haven't made a determination whether we're going to measure, how we're going to measure room receipts and what level of growth we want to see there, or rooms, or tickets, or any of that stuff. You know, we very politely say to the outside agencies, you know, good luck.
I don't think that's fair. I think we measure a lot of things. The real question is, is do we really have control over those measures? And there are a number of measures that basically you can say, I want X to happen, but if you don't have a direct mechanism where you can affect that outcome, you're really not doing a whole lot.
And so maybe--
And I think there are problems in the whole measurement question, and I think one of the things we're doing with WADMAC, with the Tourism Alliance, is trying to iterate toward what are measurables that make sense from the standpoint of what we can really influence.
Sure. Well, I think, yeah, I agree, and we can debate that all day long, but I think if we start setting some benchmarks of the things that we want to see happen, and then we can say, okay, why didn't we hit this benchmark? What are the elements that interfered with that? And then you can say, you know, Easter was in March, it was April, and all those, we can go down that road. But if we continue to have a systemic problem, we've got to be able to say, something is broken, and we're not in that position. And I think, you know, if this were a private company, we'd be asking ourselves that question.
I think we've asked that question very often and have struggled with sort of how to measure those things.
Right.
And we have seen successes in particular areas. Yeah, I would point to the funding that the city has put toward Christmas, toward Arts Month and what have you, and we have demonstratable results there. The broader question of tourism in general is a much more difficult question. You can say, we want, you know, 900,000 room nights, but, you know, basically, we don't determine that because people come here and they may choose to stay in hotels, or they may choose to stay in timeshares. And if they're in timeshares and they're trading out, that doesn't show up in our data. So, you know, you can set a target, but you have absolutely no control over whether that target's hit or not.
Sure. Well, I think, based on some of the discussions that I had with some folks at the Alliance, they want to be able to be held accountable.
I think so.
And so I think, maybe just counsel advice Mayor Firelin's point, you know, I think this conversation, the conversations that are happening at other boards, there's a clear message that, you know, the overall destination is expecting some results. And so I feel confident that Ms. Riordan will come back with something. I'm hoping that she does. And maybe that's a target. You know, if we don't hear something within, you know, a 12-month plan, three-year plan coming from the Tourism Alliance, WADMAC, then I think, you know, we need to be able to address that.
Well, I think we do have a timetable here in that the discussions we have, the interactions that staff have and bring back to us, I would expect that in the presentations that are made for the next budget cycle, we will have something different than what we've had in the past. And that's, I think, part of this process.
Would you see value in council having a conversation about what are the measurables we'd like explored and then have staff report back? So that we're putting--
I think you can't even go there yet.
Okay.
Because, just take the Alliance as an example. We throw every criticism at them, room nights, you know, broad-scale stuff, when in reality they probably have a more narrow, a more narrow role to play in the destination. So let's figure out what that is, and then we can talk about--
How do you measure what that role is?
What that role is. Because does the Alliance have enough money at its disposal to affect, to push the big needle? Probably not. But do they have enough to push several of the small needles? Sure. So let's have that discussion first, so.
Sure. Well, I think when you combine the Alliance and WADMAC, and essentially it's one budget, it's pretty significant. And, you know, when we talk about regional cooperation, you know, CW and Bush, we're all kind of in this together, and, you know, we haven't seen the results that I think that the destination should when we compare ourselves to other destinations.
No matter how we move forward, as I told Mr. Tubbs this morning, I want to know that the city's doing their part to own this problem. So there's, you know, any number of routes we could take. I think this healthy conversation, particularly between the city and the Alliance, to happen now is the right time. Because our best role is to write a check to someone who really knows what they're doing, and, you know--
And I think the leadership there is, has shown with Karen and the staff she has, since she's been on board, has shown a real willingness to engage and lots of new ideas coming forward. So I'm fairly optimistic about--
And this is our opportunity to really tease that out, too. Because, you know, in the past, it's kind of been, the money went out, we hope for a result, and, you know, I'm not, the conversation wasn't where it is today. So it's an opportunity we need to jump in.
I take your point about we don't know enough yet to determine what all the measurables are, but we're starting this conversation. So I don't see how we can start the conversation and say, we want some measurements. We don't know, we don't even know what they are. But we, I think we have to communicate something about the intent of what we want those measurements to tell us. Otherwise, what framework is the conversation operating on?
Yeah, and I don't disagree with that, because once we have that conversation, essentially, how would you like to be measured? What results do you want to bring us? That will take care of the, this is what I can do well discussion.
Well, and so to that, I think what we're all saying is we've been having good conversations, and we're feeling and hoping good things. I do think it would be helpful that we have more work sessions, that there's a presentation made where we can, as a body, have communications with particularly Ms. Riordan and that team as they manage the $2 tax and then the other monies, about what goes on there. And I think frankly, Colonial Williamsburg would do themselves and all of us, you know, a service if they came maybe quarterly as well to say, here's what we're seeing, without having to divulge some proprietary numbers. Up, down, feeling good, we tried something, didn't work, rather than come in and make a presentation for 20 minutes at budget time. I think we should get more than that.
And I would like to have somebody who knows something about measurables. I've had this conversation this morning at 8:00 at Old Town Medical Center because they're having the same issue. How do you measure what you're doing? It's not so hard there. You've got patients coming in the door. I'm having a little trouble seeing how we can make the Alliance responsible for the number of room nights or the number of people who eat in restaurants. I mean, those are, those are almost beyond their control.
I think what might be the useful conversation, and again, I would ask maybe staff to make some initial contacts, but see if between sort of WADMAC and the Alliance and Colonial Williamsburg, there, you know, we couldn't have a group come and talk about tourism and measurables in tourism and what other destinations use, what works, what doesn't work, and give us some basis for thinking about this as well. Is that, would that be a useful?
It would be.
Okay. Let me work with the city manager on that and see if we can come up in, I think, sometime in the next couple of months with a work session item on that. Would that be useful? Would that be useful?
The sooner the better. I, you know, I don't think, you know, I think we can't kick the can too far down the road. I think, you know, we've got, you know, a huge opportunity that's not being realized.
So what is that?
Well, I think we have capacity to bring more visitors to town. And, and those visitors come with money in their wallets. And when they come, they spend money in hotels, they eat in restaurants, they buy a loaf of bread, they do lots of things. And that puts money into our coffers.
I don't think any of us argue that, that we'd love to see more people here, but-
There's the opportunity. That's the unrealized opportunity that I don't think we're achieving. And I think we need to do something more quickly than, than not. So you said a couple of months. And if it's next month we have this discussion again, then I would look forward to that.
I think next, next month's work session's already slated for, for something. So it could be July, but, you know, we'll, we'll push forward with that. But again, I think, you know, well, I think that would be a useful discussion.
And I don't want to fall victim to paying too much attention to semantics, but I don't feel that we're kicking the can down the road. To me, that would be not investing in tourism at all. That would be just doing, just doing nothing and hoping things get better. We can talk about refining the approach. We can talk about looking at, at ways we qualify the, the return on the investment. But I do think that's different from kicking the can down the road. That's the term I would have thought when we looked at the period of time in which the state stopped investing in the Virginia retirement system. That was the can down the road.
The can is the accountability. The accountability can. I think, I want, I want to have, you know, the discussion about how we're going to measure this investment that we do make. There's no question, we make a significant investment. And we, we invest more per capita than, than our, our partners in the region. And I think we, we've shown leadership in there, and there's no question of that. But I think we would need to have goals and some measurables. And, and I would, I would then look to staff and the chamber staff to work on, what is it that we should be looking at?
Well, we will have that discussion. I, I would argue that there are a whole bunch of measurables that we've looked at, and looked at, and looked at. But let's hold this discussion until, till the work session, when we can bring some people in and really create sort of, you know, here's what's out there, here's what we have, here's what, you know, we would like to measure, but very difficult, if not impossible, to do.
Yeah, I think, I think finding what you can measure.
Yeah.
Well, one, one point I will agree with Mr. Pons on here, not that I'm disagreeing on the others, is that we may have a June agenda set for a work session, but if we wait two months, we're a good portion through the year. And I just think the, and it may not, I'm not sure what's possible in a month period of time, but the sooner we can get this ironed out, the better it will be for our funding partners, because then they will know what it is they need to be tracking. Because the later they get the information, the harder it will be for them to pull the right data out.
And there's so many conversations going on already amongst these people we've just referred to. So let's go ahead and have it.
I, you know, I'm, I'm not sure that there's anything out there that isn't sort of, that that isn't being pulled in. I think you've got, the question is, how do you, how do you put it together? And how do you put it into a presentable form? And then, then the question is, and then what are you going to do? And, and essentially, we are already in a process where there's not a whole lot you can do, you know, to, to change sort of what's going to, to happen with the funding that, that's out there. I think you really, you know, you know, in the time I've spent dealing with this, I think you really are looking sort of, you know, you can make minor tweaks and what have you, but if you're really going to make changes, they are going to be for the next year.
Yeah, 14 is done. I mean, that, that advertised campaign is in-
We're really talking about 2000.
I think it's still, it's still missing the point of this conversation. Because that's making an assumption that we're not doing the right things or the best things already. We don't, we don't know that. I mean, the, the Alliance might be doing every, they might be maximizing every possible dollar they get. But until we, we come to some agreement, work with some compromise or discussion with the Alliance on, on what is measurable based upon what it is we're looking for, and then start measuring that, we won't have any answers. And we can try this, and we still may not have all the answers. But I'm just saying that moving more quickly makes more sense.
Let me, let me work with staff and see if we can put together something. And if it's not in, in the June regular work session, maybe we could have a special session to deal with this. Time, time seems to be important to, to a number of people. Okay?
Thank you.
Anything else? Did you get enough to go forward with?
Yes, sir.
Or what would you, what could be, what could we help you with at this point?
Well, I think that, first of all, we've been having conversations about, the, the June meeting was intended to be a meeting with everyone in this room, plus the four agencies, and delve into the whole question of the city's economic future. And, and as you've discussed, Mr. Pons, you broadened the conversation considerably from the, what you asked last month. It was more of, what I took away was, how did you spend the money that was used last year? Give us a full accounting of that. So it was expressed more in terms of accounting and post-audit function. What your real issue is much broader than that in terms of-
And I'm sorry if I wasn't more clear, but in, in discussion about an MOU, it was about funding going forward, and what it is that we, what we expect that this money to be doing going forward.
But I think what we're, what we've been discussing about doing in June is getting at the broader issue of what does, what does each organization, be that Wadmac, or the Alliance, or Colonial Williamsburg, what do they see as their vital role in advancing the city's economic future? And, and in all cases, that is keyed into tourism, but even beyond tourism. So I think it's a question, maybe how we're asking the question, how we're getting at it, but we really are getting at the same issue.
No, and I think that's going to be a valuable conversation. I think, because, you know, all those things are intertwined.
They are intertwined, yes.
So it's a good opportunity to have those discussions and ask some other questions, and, and see how each of those partners feel about the future, and how they, their role in our economic future, and whether that jives with what needs.
And then measurement becomes part of our discussion.
Exactly. So, well, we will continue.
Try to do this as smart as we can.
Yeah, exactly. Okay. Thanks. Our next background presentation and discussion is a Stryker seminar update. And we have David Steeman, Ed Peace, from Steeman, Peace Architecture. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor Holman and council, Mr. Tuttle, and everyone else. Thanks for giving us a little time to give you an update on what's going on with Stryker. We've got some images we're gonna show you. Most of you have seen, seen many of these, but it's a good opportunity to get them out there. And this is indeed kind of a snapshot of where we are today. It changes, changes hourly. I was gonna say daily, more than that. So this is just a sort of moment in time here. But I'm Ed Peace, David Steeman, and we have Sam Daniel here from Daniel Construction, our contractor. So once we go through these, we're here to answer any and all questions any of you might have. So I'm assuming this is ready to go?
Where's my computer?
Did I just turn it off?
There.
Okay, great, thanks. Okay, so we're gonna start, take you through site plan, floor plan, refinements, some of the studies we're doing having to do with the interior of the building, council chambers, et cetera. So first thing David's gonna say, if you were, is about the site planning, what's going on with that.
Thanks, Ed. Maybe we should acknowledge that we're working with a great team at the city, with the city manager's office, public works, the library staff, planning. Everyone's really made themselves very accessible to us, and we thank you for that. We just want to quickly run through this. I think the plan, we're gonna zero in on the plan in some few coming slides, but this is the building, the sort of resultant footprint from where we've been in the process so far, placed on the site. And, you know, the area for the grove remains on the west, and the pocket park as well, which even can extend into here. We've looked at some expansion strategies, and we're gonna show you those two, to those two very quickly. But with this plan, we can really start to establish the finished floor elevation, the grades around the building, how all that has to come together, how the stormwater's gonna work. We have planned for underground stormwater retention in this area, and that'll also include some quality treatment with some filter type systems. I don't know, they filter the water, allow you to use a little bit surface, less surface area to accomplish those kind of things. Also, the, this footprint wranglings have created a little bit of a pretty clear mechanical yard here, which lines up pretty neatly with where the police station generator area is. It is the only thing that looks anything like a backyard for this project. Otherwise, we're very exposed all the way around. So that's the footprint to date, and we'll just move forward into the expansion plan.
Yes. Again, this, this was done early on, I guess probably back in February, when, as we were starting to move forward in earnest on the, on the floor plans, or the design of the whole thing. And so meetings with, with Mr. Tuttle and his staff, as well as council, it was, you know, we decided, let's try to get a better grip on the expansion capabilities of the scheme. We had proposed it early on, but had not had a chance to revisit it. So part of that was to spend some time at the police station and look at what the capabilities are there for, for renovation and expansion of that. And what we came away with was, they don't really need a lot of, a lot more square footage. They just need a complete kind of reconfiguring of their space. They basically need an office building, as opposed to the building that was designed originally, which, as you all know, no longer takes in suspects, et cetera. So it's a much different function. So we spent some time with that, went over there with Sam, who, who took a hard look at structural, existing structural and mechanical, to make sure there are no existing or obvious flaws that could, that would prohibit a renovation of that building. And then the studies that we went through, and this is just sort of the final one, was looking at about a 6,000 square foot expansion of Stryker. And in this particular instance, this final one that we seem to think was probably the most effective, it still, still maintained a sizable piece of the western grove of trees that we had presented early on. So that's, yeah, I think that study was pretty convincing for all of us, that, that number one, Stryker can be expanded, and the police station, there's some real potential there. Whenever that becomes, you know, a hot issue, I think it is, there's, there's some potential there that's actually pretty good. The next series of floor plans will show you the most current, up to, up to date floor plan.
Yeah, we've had several meetings with the team, and sort of gone at this bit by bit, you know, the library section, council chamber, how do the meeting rooms and the exhibit space work? So I think similarly, we're gonna break it down like that today for you. This is the overall floor plan. And when we started out with the team, we said, guys, let's try to not grow the footprint. You know, we want to hear more about how you want, what you need, how you want it to work, but that the goal is not to go in that direction. In fact, to maybe be mindful of efficiencies that we can find along the way. So the overall result of that is that we've, we've taken out about 1,300 square feet, and everyone's still happy, so that's great. So we'll move forward into the library area. This is one of the early things we took on with the library scheme, and we noted pretty quickly that they probably would be served well to have just a small kitchen out there. The kitchen's way down the hall, and they have kind of a different use, just to support a meeting in the conference room. We made sure to sort of dial in the relationship between this administrative services coordinator and the reception desk, and how that, that person really wears two hats. They need a distinct workspace, but they also need to be able to cover this desk during the day. During the evening, the library services comes in for an event, that's someone else. So that's actually secured off, there's no access into the library area. The other thing we did was pull the waiting area out of the sort of back of the house, and there's this kind of a neat little nook here in the lobby that wanted to be that waiting space. And then we dressed up the conference room, so much so that it, it started to duplicate the small meeting area, and the library really liked this location for a small meeting room, in terms of their ability to manage it. So we were able to pretty much determine that those are redundant, and that we satisfied the program with this space indeed for the small meeting room. This is just a quick look at some 3D studies that we did. Here's how that desk works, and there's a sort of a pass-through window that during the day would be open. And this person, taking on their normal duties, will see or hear when someone comes to be served here. This is the conference room, which will have a little bit higher finish, because there is some vistas into this from the public areas. But it's a large, the library board, I think, is 22 people, and we determined you could get about 25 people in this room. It has access from the, the office area, and then also from the public side. So it's a dual-purpose room that can be used by the public most of the time, in fact. And then this is just a quick glance at how that waiting area works and start, we think it's nice to maybe start to create some seating areas in this larger exhibit area. When you have a big room, it's hard to furnish it, because you feel like you're out in the middle of nowhere. But this one did start to have a little bit of a sense of enclosure. So it all came together to make some sense, and free up some space in the office area. So I think I'm gonna hand it off again.
So we spent a considerable amount of time on the council chamber itself, and to somewhat lesser degree up to this point, on the exhibition space and entry. But we're kind of moving into that area now. But again, we're gonna give you a little bit of a close-in view of what's happening with the, with the council chamber. The plan is somewhat similar from the original scheme. The size of it's the same. We got some great input from Mr. Tuttle and his staff, as well as council. So we, we feel pretty good, and everyone seems happy with the, with the layout, with the number of seats, on the organization of presentation podiums such as this. We have a movable lectern in the center, clerk's desk down on, on the lower end of the plan. And we're showing these two, two groups. It's a small 18-inch area with movable seats for staff. Then of course, of course, the dais, that we're showing nine seats there, and of course, five would be for council, but this could be used for other groups as well, planning commission, whomever. We went to, with, after a number of discussions, at the end of the room, you'll see in some of the subsequent images, we had somewhat circuitous discussions about whether to have a retractable screen, do we have a fixed wall, do we have a screen on the far end? Just how are people, how are the citizens who come to the meetings going to see the presentations? And we finally, seemed to make sense ultimately to have a permanent wall that will function as a screen. So we'll show you an image of that pretty soon. So that has, that's this area here. There's still some, it's a gentle slope, it's a 1 to 20 slope, which is, in terms of accessibility, requires no handrails or anything for anyone in a wheelchair or who is impaired. There are, right now, 110 fixed seats with probably overall room for 120 to 130, given we have these built-in kind of bench areas, and the, and the window, and the two, the exterior window, as well as the interior window. So there's quite a bit of seating for overflow. We're hopeful it will really be jam-packed every meeting we have, at a degree. Who knows? But anyway, other further discussions with some of the, the staff about IT, and just how these, the most efficient use of this sort of back-of-house space, and we feel like it's gone, gotten together, come together pretty well. I think that touches on most of the key items there. As part of this, too, I mean, so far, we've shown you plans, and, and the plan is really such a key, key generator of really so much of the building. But at the same time, we're looking at the vertical dimension of all these spaces. So these are two cross-sections that are in development now that will be, there's kind of in the halfway between construction document level and more. We've simplified it for this presentation, but we started doing these concurrently with those, with the plan studies in order to establish wall heights, ceiling heights, starting to look at finished materials on the wall, finished floor elevations, that type of thing. So we have a cross-section here through the city council chamber adjacent hallway in the large meeting room, and going the other direction, a longitudinal section through the council chamber here. We're getting to look at how the ceiling system works for acoustic- We're getting to look at how the ceiling system works for acoustic in terms of controlling natural light. And same thing as over in the exhibition space, which we haven't gotten quite as far with that. Also, kind of in tandem with these, with the drawing studies, we did some model studies where we began to look at, take a first shot at sort of structure, at how the ceiling planes, this is the exhibition space, not city council, by the way. These may be a little hard to read, I'm going to go through them fairly quickly. But again, looking, starting to integrate structure, how the ceiling begins to open to the natural light above. This is looking at the roof trusses over the exhibition area. So, kind of seeing the staging of that as that moves from the ground up to the roof. And the same thing in the council chamber. This was again, an early model, looking at the roof structure and how the ceiling and truss work overhead and all that come together. So, this is a current rendering of the council chamber, just this one kind of fixed point of view. But you start to see, again, a little more refined area of how the ceiling is working, the flat ceiling over on the outside with lighting next to the, to the two large windows. The large window on the north side, which is pretty well protected by the exterior wall and looks out into a landscaped area. So, it's a nice kind of bit of privacy there as well as that indirect north light. You can see here, this is the screening wall, or it's the permanent wall that will be used as the projection area. And again, this is starting to get a sense of how this space might work. The suspended ceiling here is still very much in the works to determine what the acoustic needs are. Our acoustical engineer hasn't done his modeling for this space yet, so that's going to be a big part to tell us exactly what's the nature of this suspended, these suspended planes that will be used also for controlling natural light. And there'll be a fair amount of equipment up there, both mechanical as well as, as projection equipment, lighting, that type of thing. But again, starting to also develop a language of finishes with the wood paneling, establishing working heights, 10-foot heights, all this begins to, all this begins to tie together into what we intend to make as a pretty tightly integrated scheme that carries through the whole building. So, the gridlines you see are not just for this room, they begin to establish relationships in most of the other spaces in the building. We included this slide here really just to show that north window that we were looking at, and you can see how well protected it is. The other exterior window, we talked about having some degree of translucency to it for privacy sake, so people walking on the street can't look in. This is just kind of to locate that window. I believe that kind of touches on the high spots of where we are. I got the old picture. We had an updated picture of the Stryker, not updated, but it was a little bit nicer image of that. But, that's, that's, again, that's a snapshot of the things we've been working on up to date, and we're happy to answer any questions any of you might have. And again, Sam is here too, so.
Great. Well, David, Ed, and Sam, thank you all for being here, and thanks, thanks for the update. And again, I think this is, as you said, we're iterating toward a final product, and what I'm seeing so far is, I'm really pleased with. But let me go to Council to see what questions they might have at this point.
Ed, or David, could you just give the audience an update on why we're not in Stryker and it's still there? About why there's no demolition that's taking place yet?
The timing.
I mean, we're aware of that, but I'm not sure the public is.
Sure. I, who wants to, I mean, some of that is related to Sam's, this whole process.
Can you come to the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll let Sam step up in a minute. But the main thing that we're, that we're trying to do, not that we're going to do with the demolition of the Stryker, is to have it integrated into the, into the construction schedule so that once it's demolished, we don't have any downtime. So, if Sam's starting date is going to be in August, that's the current projected time, if he were, if it were to be demolished now, there's a good chance there would be, even with the demolition itself and then the installation of some of the site work, there would probably be a downtime, a time where he might actually have to demobilize. So, that is, it's inefficient, it leaves a big hole in the ground with nothing going on, which is not a good thing. So, that's kind of the crude way to put it.
If you want to elaborate on that.
Well, I think you probably answered the question very well. Our hope is, once we mobilize on-site to demo Stryker, that all of the designs of the site work and then the building itself will be far enough along that we would go from demolition and then backfilling the void left by the basement and then continuing on with the site work. And we're not at that stage of the game yet. And so, because of that reason, it's premature to demolish the existing Stryker. In fact, I was surprised to learn that you had already vacated the existing Stryker. And I thought we were going to be meeting there today, only to find that we're meeting here.
Well, I think that's in part because we didn't know at the time and figured it would be better to do it earlier rather than, than later. But essentially, what I'm hearing is it really is, from your standpoint, an efficiency question and, and cost reduction.
Exactly. It's efficiency and saving your money to not mobilize, to tear down Stryker and then demobilize only to come back, because if you do that, it's just more expensive. So, we're trying to be prudent with that.
Excellent. Doug?
Yep.
Judy?
No questions.
Thank you for butting us over the other day. It was, you know, good to see you kind of on the computer.
Yeah, we've been very communicative.
Yeah, I think there's been, you know, you've talked about sort of your relation with the library staff and city staff and the, the back and forth there and the flow of information and what have you. But I think, I'll speak for Council, but you've just heard that, I think your interaction with Council one-on-one, giving us sort of updates and what have you, has been really terrific as well. So, I feel like, you know, we are part of the process, but, you know, we also understand that the really important part of the process is you interacting with city staff and library staff to make sure that we get a building that works in the way that we want it to work.
If you can stand it for several more months, we'll keep doing it. It's pretty important.
I think we all can.
I know at this stage of the game, my role in the job is limited. I feel somewhat on the sideline just watching as someone else is playing on the game. But I will say that as I see the developments, I'm putting on my architecture hat now, for which I have no license. But I definitely like personally the way the job has, has developed, and I think it's looking very good.
Thanks. I, I will agree with that. Everything I've seen has been really, you know, iterations towards something that, that really works for, for the building as both a library exhibition and city council building. And I think it's, I think we, I personally didn't realize what a challenge we were putting up there when we started saying, we want a building that can do all these things. But I think you guys have really responded in a way that exceeds my expectations to this point.
Well, it's amazing the number of things that have to be taken into consideration that may seem to be very small, but they play a large part in the overall scheme of the project.
I was just going to say, Mr. Daniel, you have a lot in common with Council because we have never let our lack of an architectural licensing permit of us people...
Yeah, well, several architects that I've worked with before have commented on that too, and some with more, more pleasure than others.
And any other questions? Well, thank, thank you all. I think...
All right, thank you for having us.
We may have you back one, one more time as, as we get toward this. But, and Sam, thank you for coming down from Richmond. I really appreciate that.
Thanks.
Thanks. Our next order of business is city council communication. Anything at this point? Schedule meetings, Jack, anything in particular?
I don't see anything out of the ordinary to point out, so no, sir.
Any questions on that? That brings us to our final agenda item today, which is open forum at a time when anyone who can, who wishes may address Council on any issue. So, if you wish to address Council, please come forward and state your name and address. Seeing none, I will ask that we adjourn city council to reconvene at the end of the housing authority meeting. Do I need a motion for that?
Some of...
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Jerry, would you?
Aye.
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 Do you want to take a five-minute break or to go right into housing authority? We'll go right into the housing authority meeting.
Oh, we got to do this.